Already at 6 o'clock and I'm gonna call this regular city council meeting to order. Councilmember Cox is attending remotely, but all other council is present. And if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also want to acknowledge that we, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people, the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Union Tribe and the Squawks Union Tribe. Can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda and consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll appear to that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We've approved this evening's agenda.
Before we move on, the LTAC addition.
We'll just do it under him here. Okay, well, first up on our approved agenda this evening is public recognitions and presentations, and we're gonna get a presentation from the United Way Community Programs. Chris?
What's that?
You right up top?
I'm always ready. Buckle up.
Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
My name is Chris Wells. I'm the Executive Director of United Way of Thurston County. Thank you for letting me come and speak to you for a few minutes tonight. I know that some of you have attended some of our recent events, our ALIS Summit, our CEO and Community Leader Luncheon, but this is an effort for us to get information out to the community about our ALIS data. ALIS is a national United Way research study that attempts to accurately quantify poverty. ALIS is an acronym for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed, and essentially what that means is households who are working and earning incomes that are insufficient to meet their basic needs, and yet they exist sometimes far above the federal poverty level, which is what we have used for over 60 years now to try to measure poverty in the United States. So FPL was indexed to the cost of food when it was established, that calculation, and in 2025, the federal poverty level, no matter where you live in the United States and what it costs to live there, for a family of four is $30,000 a year. What we want to measure with ALIS is how many households are living above that federal poverty level threshold, who are not eligible for social safety nets often, and who still can't meet their basic needs. Because if you're working and you're earning an income and you can't meet your basic needs, you're poor, right? So with ALIS, we measure that data nationally. The United Ways across the country help fund this research, and this has been a project that we've been working on for the last 15 years. So our most recent ALIS data for Thurston County and Washington State came out in the end of May this year, and I've been making rounds throughout the community to try to communicate this information and help people become fluent, not only in the number of households that exist below the ALIS threshold, but also what the greatest stressors are on those households and what we can do as community members and community leaders and policymakers and decision-makers to influence and improve the outcomes for ALIS households. So in Thurston County, in our most recent report, which I have up here for all the council members, our most recent data tells us that we have 33% of households in Thurston County that exist below the ALIS threshold. That's a combined number of households that are already at or below FPL, plus the number of households that are above FPL but can't afford the cost of living in Thurston County, Washington. So 33% of households in Thurston County exist below that threshold, and since I'm here in Lacey, I wanted to bring Lacey-specific data to you as well. I think that number in the City of Lacey is 38%, and then when you start to look at disaggregated data, you can see the number of particular populations who are the most highly impacted, or the most highly represented, I should say, in those ALIS data. For example, in Thurston County, 3.5% of our population is black, and yet 38% of black households fall below the ALIS threshold. For Hispanic households, I think that's about 11% of our population in the county, and yet I think 40-something percent, and you've got it in front of you, I don't have all of the specific numbers committed to memory, but you can see that there are some vulnerable populations that are well overrepresented in the ALIS data. The biggest predictor of falling below that ALIS threshold is if you are BIPOC, if you're a single female-headed household with children, 68% of those households fall below the ALIS threshold, and they make up about 10% of our population. And how we can begin to examine the stressors that are placing the most stress on ALIS households and what we can do to mitigate those impacts. So the three biggest costs to any household are housing, childcare, and food, right? And those are followed by, of course, medical care, transportation, and other basic essentials. For an ALIS household, a family of four with two earners, full-time, with two children under the age of five, an ALIS survival budget, and this is the barest bones budget you can earn and survive in Thurston County, you're on ALIS survival at $115,000 a year. That means that you're probably spending about $3,000-plus a month in childcare, another $2,500 a month on your housing costs, plus transportation, healthcare, and other basic necessities. So what are we doing to mitigate those impacts on those two biggest stressors on ALIS households around housing expense and childcare? So I only have 10 minutes to talk about this here with you tonight, but I want to at least put the data out there for people to begin to examine that, and then for us to begin to examine the pipelines to poverty and the pipelines to struggle. We have a lot of conversation about wages in Thurston County, and that's a really big hot topic of conversation, but I would say that wages and minimum wages are not the policy levers we need to be pulling to solve these really deeply embedded systemic issues that are intertwined with one another, that conspire to create an environment where more and more families struggle. In examining those pipelines to ALIS and those pipelines to poverty, one of the biggest things that really stands out in Washington State and in Thurston County is our educational attainment. We rank 48th in the U.S. for FAFSA completion. The FAFSA is the Free Application for Federal Student Aid, and that's the leading indicator of post-secondary enrollment and attainment. So our kids are not graduating high school and going on to pursue a post-secondary credential, which is the difference between $750,000 to $1 million in earnings over the course of their working life. So one of our biggest priorities, if we want to stem the systemic pipeline to ALIS, is to improve our education outcomes. And to that end, in 2022, we started piloting a navigator program that embeds high school, career, and resource navigators in all of the high schools to help every student connect with those navigators and complete their FAFSA, explore their high school and beyond plan, and enroll in a post-secondary pursuit and to be resourced to do that. Another big stressor, of course, is housing. We need 1.1 million new units of housing in Washington State over the next 20 years, and 53,000 of those have to be built in Thurston County. It's gonna take us a long time to solve that housing problem, but one of the biggest systemic issues that we have is that the skilled workforce needed to construct those homes has been dying by attrition. We have that aging workforce that's aging out of that skilled residential construction profession, and we have not built a pipeline to that. So I'm gonna close with this. We have launched a residential construction academy that's been more than two years in the making at South Puget Sound Community College. Our first cohort of students is graduating next week. We'll have a ribbon-cutting and a graduation ceremony for them, and we've extended an invitation to all of the council members and to the mayor and the city manager to join us at the ribbon-cutting and help us celebrate this first cohort, and we have our second cohort that's launching on September the 29th. These are jobs that will pay household and family-supporting wages. They will keep these students from falling into that ALIS pipeline, and they will help provide us the much-needed human power that we need to build those units of housing. I am always available for questions. I'm always available for meetings. I would love to see you next Wednesday, the 10th, at 2:00 p.m. at the ribbon-cutting and graduation. And with that, I'd like to ask for your support as a community, as a council, and thank you for the time. 10 minutes.
Thank you. Really, really appreciate that. We met last week. All my weeks are, you know, all together now, but I think it's really important for the community to know all the great work that you're doing and all the opportunities that are out there, and we look forward to hearing you, you know, advise this council and our community on a more regular basis, so we look forward to that.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Keep up the great work.
I just want to add, I was out a couple of weeks ago to meet with, actually, out to that first cohort, and Damon Doyle, who's the main guy teaching the class, it's a phenomenal program, and everybody should really check it out. It's a great program. It really will put people in the workforce who can get jobs out of the gate that can actually make a family wage. So really excited about this program.
Yeah. Keep up the great work. Okay. Next up, we have proclamations. We have two proclamations, and our first proclamation is the Emergency Preparedness Month. Start with it. City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas in the Pacific Northwest, we face the threat of earthquakes, volcanic eruptions, weather events, floods, and human tragedies with unpredictable consequences, which can disrupt power, communications, and travel infrastructure. And?
Whereas first responders may not always be able to reach community members in an emergency or disaster quickly. And?
Whereas the Lacey community can take action to prepare, respond, and recover from any natural or human disaster. The more who prepare, the safer we stay, and the faster our community will recover. And?
Whereas we encourage community members to learn more about preparedness by attending local events and visiting ready.gov website to make a family preparedness plan, create emergency kit and evacuation plan, prepare for local hazards, and teach youth about emergency education. And?
Whereas we encourage the community to visit the Federal Emergency Management Agency's website, FEMA.gov, to learn more about supporting community preparedness. And?
Whereas Lacey community members who are prepared to meet in any emergency or disasters can be a positive influence on their neighbors by sharing their preparedness story and encouraging the participation of friends, family, and coworkers. And?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of Lacey City Council, do hereby recognize the month of September 2025 as Emergency Preparedness Month in Lacey, and encourage all community members to prepare themselves, their families, and their neighbors for the consequences of an emergency. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date. And Teresa, come up.
Quick follow-up, come on up.
Please, please come on up, all the way up.
... on this momentous occasion.
Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. We're honored to accept this acknowledgement on behalf of our entire team. In fact, part of our team is now at Thurston County Emergency Management, doing CERT training, Community Emergencies Response Team training, so we're working right as we speak. Our team is a 34-member volunteer team. We are sponsored by Thurston County Emergency Management. We've been active since 2018 in the county. We come from all areas in the county, and many of us reside in the City of Lacey. Our mission is to provide trained volunteers to assist in emergencies and disasters by educating citizens to be better prepared, to take care of themselves, their families, their neighbors, and in turn, their communities. Our team has responded to a variety of requests, including staffing shelters in emergency, traffic control during vaccine clinics and voting, flood response, providing educational outreach at emergency preparedness events. We also provide CERT training, I mentioned earlier, and I understand one of our council members is also very familiar with CERT. The City of Lacey has been a great partner to us in helping us achieve our mission. Working together on events like the Lacey Fund Fair, we have reached hundreds of individuals, families, and communities with information that will help them take those simple steps to stay safe in emergencies and disasters. We want to thank the city for its leadership and support as well, for helping keep us safe and being able to do our jobs better by providing training, excuse me, for providing subject matter experts and facilities for some of our training. So your members have helped us do traffic control training from the Lacey PD Department, and you've also helped us with chainsaw safety used during post-disaster with Parks and Recreation staff. So again, we are grateful for this recognition. We want to continue to work together to build community that's not only prepared for emergencies and disasters, but to lift each other up in this work, no matter what comes our way. Again, we are most grateful, and I'd like to give our team a chance to introduce themselves.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Yangeri.
Go ahead, go ahead. Yep. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Yangeri. I'm part of the CERT team. I've been a member for the last two years. Glad to be part of the team and glad to be here today.
I'm Valente Perry. I am probably the most cherry on the team.
Hi, I'm Brenda Woolmoth.
I'm Leah Wolf, one of the originals from 2015. Still here.
Hi, Susan Lester. I'm pretty new to the team and now the secretary, but very happy to be here and be involved in the team.
My name's Carlos Avila. I've been a member with DART since 2018.
Well, thank you so much for being here and all you do. You know, no one thinks there are gonna be an emergency until it's happened, and then we know that those who are actually prepared for emergencies are, obviously, have the best outcomes. And so, you know, we live in a very uncertain time, not only geographically, but you just never know what's gonna happen in your community. It's one of the things, when you become an elected official, that keeps you sort of up at night, the what-ifs. But I feel so much better knowing that we have just an amazing community of volunteers out there trying to get our community more prepared, you know, for disasters and everything you do. So really, again, on behalf of the City of Lacey and this council, thank you so much for everything you do for our community.
So the next proclamation is National Voter Registration Day. City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas registering to vote empowers eligible community members to exercise their right to vote on Election Day. And?
Whereas the City of Lacey is committed to strengthening democracy by encouraging voter registration and increasing participation in all elections. And?
Whereas civic-minded people and organizations have collaborated to establish September 16th, 2025, as National Voter Registration Day. And?
Whereas the goal for the 2025 National Voter Registration Day is to create awareness of elections and motivate eligible community members to vote in the coming months.
Whereas the strength of our democracy depends on the willingness of our community members to participate by choosing those who will lead us and voicing their opinions on important matters that will come before the voters on Election Day. And?
Whereas the Thurston County Urge Your Neighbors to Vote Challenge aims to encourage voters to reach out to their neighbors with the tools and information they need to feel informed and empowered to turn in their ballots. And?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of Lacey City Council, do hereby recognize September 16th, 2025, as National Voter Registration Day in Lacey, and encourage all eligible community members to register to vote, to vote when they receive their ballot, and to inspire others to vote. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date. And Tilly, come up.
Best part about my job is I go on vacation, and this is the first thing that I do when I get back. And because I'm a City of Lacey resident, so thank you for the opportunity. Again, my name is Tilly Puller. I'm the Elections Manager. On behalf of Thurston County Auditor Mary Hall, thank you for recognizing National Voter Registration Day. Voting is our cornerstone of our democracy, but you can't vote if you're not registered to vote. Last year, we surpassed 200,000 registered voters in Thurston County. City of Lacey comes in third amongst our cities and towns in registering voters, so thank you and our residents and the county. Sorry, I'm still also fighting a cold here, so I apologize. Voter registration has never been any easier. Through same-day voter registration, anybody can register and get a ballot up to 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. 16- and 17-year-olds can pre-register. They just have to register with us, and then we'll get a ballot to them when they become eligible. 2025 marks our 12th National Voter Registration Day. Again, City of Lacey is a big part of that celebration, so thank you. We appreciate your help in increasing awareness and registering and helping our participants in the democratic process. Those of us that are virtual right now, registering is easy to do. Simply go to votewa.gov and follow the prompts. Our voter registration office in Tom Water is right next to our ballot processing center. If you have not, visit our facility. We will have a Lacey library as our second vote center come this November 4th election. Again, on behalf of Thurston County Auditor Mary Hall, thank you for your continued support and partnership on this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we just had this conversation with this council, you know, and obviously, we live politics all our time, and so voting for us is extremely important, but it seems like, you know, every lot of voters, they only vote every four years on a presidential election, when, like, this off-year election, when you're voting for your local councils and your school board members, you know, these are elected officials that have more of a direct impact in your day-to-day life than what happens at, you know, at the federal level. And yet, we historically always have lower voter turnout in these off-year elections. And so, you know, I really encourage not, you know, everyone who's eligible to register to vote to do that, but then to make sure you come up with a plan to vote and vote early, because, you know, sometimes you put off till the last second, and who knows what can come up and prevent you from voting. So I really encourage, you know, our community to make sure you register to vote, and when you receive that ballot, you know, do your due diligence and get that ballot. It's easy to return. You don't even need to pay for postage anymore, and we have Dropbox community located all out through Thurston County and here in Lacey as well, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
So next up on our agenda is public comment. We had two written public comments that's been sent to us, and we did have one person who signed up for public comment, which is Terry. Please come on up. Terry, why don't you introduce yourself, and once you do, you'll have three minutes for public comment.
Okay, great. My name's Terry Ballard. I live in Tangawalt, and I welcome Lacey if we annex to Tangawalt. I lived there for 20 years. I am a 35-year veteran. I served in the Army for 29 years towards an active-duty retirement, and I've been, like I said, in Tangawalt for over 20 years. I'm here for a couple things before we annex. I don't want to, I don't want to be like Capital City Golf Course, where you guys just come on and don't introduce yourself and basically annex us. I'm privy to, I'm also the precinct committee officer, the Democratic precinct committee officer for Lydia Hawk. I do take a grain of salt for anybody that intrudes on Tangawalt. I'm concerned because of the safety factors of the people that moved in, of the complexes that moved into Third Way. They don't have a fire lane. They don't have a walkway all the way up to Lydia Hawk for the school. The only thing that I did was to get no parking signs posted on one side of the school, one side of school street, so the kids could properly walk to school with safety. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the fire, and I would firmly suggest that you get with our Recreation Commissioners and introduce yourselves at an early stage, because I just found that somebody just sent this to me about the meeting last Tuesday that was against, with annexation of Tangawalt. And like I said, I welcome you. You're cheaper than, you're cheaper than Thurston County, and we need roads, we need things done, we don't need our funds diverted off into different color of money counts. And I'm totally on it. Any help you need, any advice you need, I'm a regulation man, as some of you might know of me presenting to the county, but I totally, I totally welcome you. And if you want to schedule a meeting with the Tangawalt residents, I suggest you put out flyers and have your meeting at the Lydia Hawk School. You know, that would be great. Introduce yourself. We have, I know, I have knowledge of the three drywells on Husky and, Husky and the other street, can't remember the street, but three drywells where all of our stormwater goes into, so there's no contamination whatsoever. We're not wanting, we're not wanting sewer. We stay on septic. Septic's great. We don't, we don't need, we don't need that service. We have three wells in Tangawalt Park that provides, that provides us very cheap water. People are amazed with the cheap water, and it's well water, and right now, our streets are being torn up for upgrades of the water system. So like I said, totally welcome. I get rid of, I get rid of vagrants, I get rid of homeless people living in campers out in front. I got rid of a drug house. I didn't like the drug house on School Street that they just found, and over $100,000 in cash, and probably equal to that, and the guy gets off with a $25,000 bail. That's, that's a no-go for me. Any, any, any help you, or concerns that you have, you can contact me in Tangawalt, and I will, I will do my best to help you. I am totally retired.
Thank, thank you. Thank you very much. And obviously, we're at the very, very beginning stages of talks between, you know, the City Council and Thurston County about what that would look like, and it'll be a long process, but we're in the very beginning stages of that.
Just make sure you get them to pay for all the upgrades of all the roads that they were supposed to, because they take that county road fund and they use it for, into the general fund.
That will be a long conversation with the county, for sure. Thank you, Terry.
Sure.
Is anyone else wishing to address the council? Seeing none, then let's go on to our next agenda, I am, which is the Mayor's Report. And I have a couple things. The first, first thing on my Mayor's Report is the reappointment to the Historical Commission for Ed Holm. It's been great on our Store Commission, and I'm, we're lucky to have him, and I'm happy to reappoint him for another term. So that is my recommendation, that we reappoint Ed for another term on the Historical Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in fear of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. The second thing that I want to continue to keep this council apprised of, and we talked a little bit about last Tuesday, was the ongoing discussions with the FIFA fan zones and that entire process. The three cities and the county and some of the stakeholders got together last Thursday, and it sounds like that the majority of the region has decided to go forward with one location, and the ask at the time was that, that what we'd be looking for, in this case, would be LTAC funds, and that would be split between Lacey and Olympia and the county. What they're looking for is like 80, about 84,000?
85,000.
Like 85,000, and then Tom Water would make up the rest. It was sort of a, it's been, obviously, been a back-and-forth conversation. The one thing that I have to bring up now, and that's why I'm bringing this before this council, is that
council, is that this is going to go forward through the LTAC process, is that the LTAC process for this year actually closed last Friday. And so, if, and we haven't received an application yet, and so, we need sort of direction from this council to be able to open up the LTAC process for, I'd say, until 2000, to the 18th?
19th.
To the 19th. And it will be open for any LTAC event, so it wouldn't be just limited to this one event, but it would then give the opportunity for, for the chamber, who'd be the sponsor of this request, to get in an application. And I know it's sort of late in the process. I, you know, I, for a second, I thought we were going to go in a different direction, but it sounds like this is the direction that the majority of the region's going to, and so, I mean, I would support opening up the process. And then, once it goes to the LTAC that's processed, that is its own separate process, you know, it'll go through the, they have to submit application and then go through the LTAC process, and I'm, I'm fine for that. Does anyone have any concerns about it being open for two more weeks? Yeah?
I have no concern at all with opening for two weeks. My only concern is that if it goes through the LTAC process, it's then going to come before this body for a vote, not as part of our normal budget, right, but as a separate, a separate vote, just on LTAC.
Yeah, so this is.
I want to see exactly where the money's going, what they're doing, and I want some guarantees that if they aren't able to raise the rest of the money, our money coming back to Lacey.
So, this is an ongoing conversation that we've been having. There was a time several years ago, and some of your council members could remember, we looked at LTAC through a separate process. You know, they would all, the LTAC committee would finally give us a recommendation, we'd take a look at all, and it used to be in like a work session or something like that, and at that point, we could sort of go yea, nay, we could sort of move things around. Then, you know, sort of state law changed, and after the state law changed, that really gave the LTAC committee a little more independence. From that point on, we sort of just put it in through our, into our budget, and it became part of our normal budget process, where it didn't really come from the council any longer. We're going to actually move that back, and so, it won't be, even with this process alone, we will, we will start looking at LTAC separately again, because for numerous reasons, I think we realized that the other process maybe wasn't the best process, and I think it does give us a little more opportunity to, to take a look at some of these, not only this project, but some of these other projects that's been funded by LTAC and have it go through its separate process. So, that is going to happen regardless. And so, is there, is there anyone else wishing, who would be against opening back LTAC applications for another two weeks? Okay. City manager, do you have enough direction on that?
I do, thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Okay. Well, with that, that is my report. I'm going to turn it back over to you, City Manager.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And we got a couple items on the City Manager Report. First, a couple of public works bids items. The first one is for our 2025 sidewalk repair project, where our Public Works Director, Scott Agar, will give a brief overview and the bid results.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. So, I'm presenting on the 2025 sidewalk repair project. Staff recommends award of Project PW2025-02 to the low bidder RW Scott Construction Company of Auburn. Their low bid was $1,296,654.00. The engineer's estimate was 1.78 million. There were 13 bidders on the project. There'll be 160 working days allowed, and we expect work to begin in October. Usually takes somewhere between a month and two months to get contracts signed and everything rolling after council approves. So, you can see in this drawing here, we, you know, one of our goals was to spread the work throughout the city, since we have 18,000 of these offsets throughout the city. So, we wanted to distribute it and take somewhat of a worst-first approach. One too far. Well, if you bear with me, I'll learn how to drive this little stick. I'm from that generation where you had to get up and go change the channel on the TV, so. Anyway, this, this photo here shows you some of the various elements of the sidewalk project. You know, we go in, we remove the trees, remove the root balls, remove the sidewalk panels, and then we repour the concrete. We have to reset any irrigation that was damaged in the process of tearing the tree and that out. We have to marry it up with the adjacent, you know, ground line. We have to set, you know, form boards and such. So, there's a little bit of a buffer area there that requires some replanning, redressing. So, that's, that's the general nature. But you can see here that, from the slide, there's over 45,000 square feet of new sidewalk and driveways. So, by comparison with previous projects, in 2019, we replaced 10,000 square feet of sidewalk, and 2021, it was 14,000, and in 2022, it was 23,000. So, this is a, is a much larger segment. And, and with that, two-inch and above, this will take care of 42% of that. Actually, Sarah Buck's crew, who has a sidewalk sucker, is taking care of the remainder of the two-inch and above. And then, the 88-plus locations where it's greater than 1.25 inches, I believe, there's over 643 locations that are greater than 1.25. Sarah's team, they do somewhere between 300 and 400 panels a year with the sidewalk sucker, and, you know, that's where they go in, they lift the panel, they cut the roots, they put the panel back down, they don't remove the tree. That, we've, we've learned as time has gone on, that roots grow back, that's not permanent, you know, it will displace the sidewalk. So, it's somewhat of a temporary fix. And with that said, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
I would move to award Lacey contract number PW2025-02, the low bid, low bidder RW Scott Construction Company from Auburn, Washington, the amount of $1,296,654.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just say, you know, half a million dollars off the engineer's estimate, that's pretty good. 1.2 is compared to 1.7, so.
I just want, I just want to say, this is, this is a really important program to me, and I think a lot of people in the City of Lacey, you know, there's so many people who use our sidewalks for safety, and, you know, it's, you know, after all the years of being here, I've learned it's, it's, it's a, it's a process to maintain that sidewalk network. You know, first of all, you know, years ago, you know, decisions were made on, on trees that, you know, caused, caused problems over the years, and we, you know, we've learned that the hard way in some cases, but, you know, this is, you know, I, people, how people get around, especially those who are in wheelchairs and everything, that need our sidewalks to be functional, this is like a quality of life for, you know, a large, you know, segment of our population. And so, I'm really proud of the work that we've, you know, are doing in this area and that we, you know, hopefully will continue to do, because it changes the quality of life and safety for a lot of our residents, and I'm really happy that we're getting this work done. Is there any other comments than it's been moved and seconded to award the low bidder? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Then that motion, that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Our next public works project is some improvements for Lift Station 9, which is located on the Ruttle Road corridor, and I want to invite Nate Ensley, our utilities engineer, up to give a summary of the project and the bid experience.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Again, I'm Nate Ensley, I'm one of our water and wastewater utility engineers with Public Works Operations. Tonight, staff recommends award of Lacey contract number PW2024-13, Lift Station 9 Improvements, to low bidder Pacific Civil and Infrastructure from Tacoma, Washington, in the amount of This project was advertised for four weeks, and bids were open on August 13th. Nine bids were received and ranged from 2.3 million to 3.1 million. The engineer's estimate on this project was $2,552,609.30. As a note, we did have to reject the two low bidders on this project due to not meeting the bidder qualification criteria laid out in the project specifications. So, this lift station was originally built in 1979, and is actually the city's largest flowing lift station with over 5,000 sewer customer connections flowing through it every day. The station has undergone multiple improvement projects over the years, but there are still some outstanding risks and challenges that this project seeks to address. The site has an outdated generator and electrical control equipment. Further, the Ruttle Road stormwater treatment pond is directly adjacent to this site, and we currently have minimal allowable response time in the event of a station outage. Lastly, our utility vaults on site create unnecessary safety risks for our operations The vicinity map on the right here shows that this station is sited at the southeast corner of Rainier Vista Community Park, with access fronting Ruttle Road. You might recognize it as you drive around town. And on the left, the site plan highlights major project's features. Specifically, the work will include removal of an existing building and construction of a new building to replace that, and this new building will house electrical controls and a new bypass pump. That helps address the issues with our outdated electrical and our emergency response challenges. The work also includes installation of new vaults, including a valve vault, a bypass vault, and meter vaults. That will help address our operator safety concerns that we have with our legacy vaults on site. We will also replace the outdated generator and odor control facility with new ones, which are more up-to-date with current industry standards. Pacific Civil and Infrastructure is qualified and capable of performing this work. After they procure some long lead items, we expect the onsite work to start up this coming winter. We have allotted 220 working days for this contract. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Can I get a motion, please?
I would, I would move that we award Lacey contract number PW2024-13 to low bidder Pacific Civil and Infrastructure from Tacoma, Washington, in the amount of $2,569,661.06.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Are you expecting to have any road closures?
I do not. At most, I would expect maybe a lane closure, because our site is very tight, and there might be some semi-truck deliveries of equipment and material. But I think last time we did this project, all we had to do was close one of those four total lanes in Ruttle Road. And I would expect the same for this.
That was my same question, traffic impacts.
So, my, my big question is, I mean, I'm not sure how much you can talk about it, but I've rarely seen that the two low bidders not, you know, be rejected because of qualifications. In this circumstances, was there something in particular that you, that you need special, you know, how do they, they miss qualifications on this?
Yeah, so, so it's hard to answer that shortly, so I might be a little bit verbose here, so I apologize in advance. So, the city recently updated their specifications to have two main pillars of our qualification criteria. So, I'm going to go about this pillar one, and then I'll do pillar two. So, for pillar number one, it basically says that the bidder or their employees have to have completed projects of similar scope in the last seven years. And so, when we say the employee, our intent there is that that employee has to have managed the day-to-day activities on-site, on the, on the job. So, when we, so we're kind of saying like the superintendent or foreman that's pointing over the shoulders of others, directing them what to do, right? And so, for this first pillar, the, the low bidder did submit some comparable projects of similar scope, however, the employee that they referenced on those projects, that they were going to put on this Lift Station 9 project, when we reviewed the available information, we didn't feel that they were in the role that I just described, the onsite superintendent. They were more of like a business owner or project manager that was like signing contracts and filling out permit applications, and that's, to us, very different than the person that's responsible for the quality of work on-site, what actually happens day-to-day, right?
That's skilled.
So, based off that, we rejected bill number one. That's, that's pillar number one. So, now we go to pillar number two, it's more about project size. So, what our, what our pillar number two says is, the bidder shall successfully completed two projects of similar size, and that means a contract value of 1.5 million dollars or greater. So, it's my understanding that this is a newer component of our specifications, where our intent here is to create a dollar value bar that they have to clear, to make sure that these contractors are ready to deal with a high-dollar value, but also just complex projects with like a lot of moving parts. And you may not get that with a cheaper project. It might be more simple, like the sidewalk repair might be a good example. And so, so with this one, the low bidder number two submitted two public works projects that they've worked on, but neither of those cleared the bar of a dollar value of 1.5 million dollars. And so, because of that, we rejected bidder number one, based off that pillar number one, bidder number two, based off that pillar number two, and we inevitably went to number three.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I, I appreciate you explaining this, because, you know, obviously, the other bidders were quite a bit lower, so I want to make sure that, you know, not only for this council, but the public understands why the decision was made. But, you know, I've also thought about this in terms of like, if you're a new, if you're a new construction company, and you're getting off the ground, you're trying to do something, and here's an opportunity that comes along, but you'll, you can never get there, because you can never get a project this expensive. You're sort of stuck in this situation where you can never grow, and I've, I've had problems, you know, it's, I've wrestled with that idea as well, but obviously, what we want is someone to come in and be able to do the project, you know, effectively, efficiently, and with the expertise necessary. And so, it's like, you know, that's, that's something I just want to make sure, you know, where, where our thought process was on that. A council member?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, you know, last contract that we just voted on, 13 bids, this one's nine, well, technically seven, because two rejected, but when businesses compete, people win. Everybody wins.
I was just going to say, those requirements, the two that you just discussed, pillar one and pillar two, are clear in the RFQ that goes out, and everyone bidding knows these things upfront, I'm assuming, right?
Yep, yep, it's in the bid documents for them to review.
Thank you.
Okay.
Will there be service interruptions?
No.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded to award this Lacey contract to the low bidder, the low qualified bidder. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. The last item I'm going to have on tonight's City Manager Report, as the council, and I think the community knows, we have a very skilled, professional, community-based police department that does a lot of different activities out in the community, from community events, connections, as well as do their job of law enforcement and community safety. So, tonight, I'm going to turn over to Chief Almata to give an update on the annual police report, and to go over some of those statistics that we've seen so far this year. So, Chief?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for having me today. I'll apologize in advance, I've been accused of bragging about the police department, I'm going to do it again. So, I'm very proud about our police department. Thank you for the resources, thank you for your support. I can't tell you how important your support is to keeping good people, recruiting good people. It really makes the, it makes, it makes the impacts. So, a lot of what we're going to talk about today is really due to you and your efforts, and talking up to the community and supporting our officers, so thank you. So, starting off, we're going to talk about 2024 crime review, what I told you about earlier in the year, what turned out. We're going to talk, give you immigration policy briefing, and then look at 2025 crime projections based upon what we're seeing so far at the half-year mark. And then, any questions you might have along the way? Like I said, I do tend to brag about the department, I'm guilty of that, so if you get tired of me talking, just raise your hand and I'll stop. Okay. That being said, there we go. So, the... So the information on the first part of the report is based upon the 2024 crime stats put out by WASPIC in July of this year. And it's also available on our website if anybody would go check my numbers. That's fair. It's all based on the National Incident-Based Reporting System, which took the place of the Uniform Crime Reporting System, which is a lot of in-the-weed stuff for you guys, but it really changes the way we document and track information and report it to the federal government, that being through the FBI and through WASPIC. You should know that not all jurisdictions track and submit data deniers. They're still doing it under the UCR system, and it does cause comparison issues. So just have that in the back of your minds. So Lacey population, as you're well aware, has been growing over the last several years. When I started here in 2019, we were at about a little over fifty-one thousand people. We're now over sixty thousand. And during that time, we've grown about ten, eleven percent, which is pretty cool. So crime rate has gone down, which is the best part. So looking at our crime rate in that time span going from 2019 through 2023, 2020, 23, we had a decrease of eleven, over eleven percent. And year-over-year, going from 2023 to 2024, we had a decrease of ten percent. So crime is trending in the right direction, and again, that's due to the efficiencies we're getting out of our staffing, increased staffing, progressive training, and just really putting an effort into being proactive and using our resources as effectively as possible.
Did you say what NIBRS stands for?
The National Incident-Based Reporting System.
Thank you.
Crime rate, those are a lot of small numbers. I apologize. They should be bigger on that screen. Basically, to make it very clear, state average, this is baked on crime rate, which is they divide populations by thousand-person chunks. So on average, in the state, per thousand members or residents in the state, there's fifty-six point two crimes. In the city of Lacey, there's fifty point four, I believe it is on that slide. Get down so I can look at it. Yeah, that looks right, fifty point four. There you go. So yeah, so we're below the state average on overall crime. Violent crime is three point six. Violent crimes per thousand members of the population for the state, we are well below that at two point two. Violent crimes are categories such as murder, rape, kidnapping, the really violent violent Crimes against persons, again, the state average is thirteen point eight one to these crime types. Again, those are the violent crime categories in addition to other types of crimes, including aggravated assaults, assaults, bribery, some other things, embezzlement, some other stuff, not embezzlement, that's property. But again, that's thirteen point eight one for per thousand. For the city of Lacey, we're at eleven point eight, again, below the state average. Property crime statewide, we're suffering at thirty-eight point eight six property crimes for a thousand members of the population statewide. In Lacey, we're at thirty-six point three, so again, below the state average. But again, the majority of the crime in Lacey tends to be property crime. And of that, most of that tends to be larceny-based crimes, various types of thefts, shoplifting, things like that. Our clearance rate, that's the rate in which crimes are solved. Statewide is about a quarter of them, twenty-six percent. In the city of Lacey, we're at thirty-four percent, and on average, that's what you want to be, about a thirty-year crimes being resolved. That's kind of the statewide average for detective work for solving all crimes, whether they're viewed or not viewed, just based on reports with no investigative leads, those type of things. We're doing actually just about where we should be, like to be higher, but we're doing where the mark should be.
How does someone like Mel Purdy get that up?
That's a great question. And I talked to the chief about that because I've been a detective a long time, and I know about clearance rates. And how he explained it is most of their crime is on-view crime, where the officer actually witnesses the crime being completed, whether it be a shoplifting or other type of different crimes. And those tend to be the majority of their crimes, so they're solved by observing and to take the person to custody almost immediately. So most of the crimes in that figure are solved by arrest. Because I asked the same thing. I went, what? That's awful high. But he justified it. Police staffing, this is based upon your population basis. So the statewide average is one point three eight officers per thousand members of the population. Now, that's kind of a deceptive figure in that that includes jurisdictions where they have, they know the population, and jurisdictions where they don't exactly know the population don't count the population. So it stands askew the numbers. It also includes gambling, investigators, and other non-traditional law enforcement members that are considered commissioned law enforcement in the state. If you look at the stat for municipalities with defined populations, it's closer to one point three. Again, we're a little below that at one point one. And that's also dependent on the officers that are trained. So if you're still in the academy or this position's not filled, it doesn't go onto that stat. So it only counts trained police officers. So if you look at the year prior, we were at point nine one, which was based on population of fifty-nine, fifty-nine thousand, four thirty for our population. In that year, we had fifty-four fully-trained officers. So we had fifty-four of sixty-eight authorized FTEs, fully-trained and street-ready. This year, in 2024, we have sixty-six fully-trained officers of seventy-two authorized FTEs. So we currently have six vacancies still from this stat. And of those six vacancies, we have two recruits that are scheduled for onboarding, September twenty-ninth, a third recruit that's going to be onboarded on October sixth, and all three of those recruits, I'm sorry, recruits are going to Beale Academy Class nine-two-nine on October fourteenth. So that's half of our vacancies right there. So, and I'm currently doing interviews for, I have one candidate in backgrounds, but it's also, when they're in backgrounds, there's also, you're looking at them to see if they're gonna be a viable candidate or not. So we'll see how that goes. So I have two official openings still that I'm still interviewing for. We just have an, we just currently had an authorized list for that today from HR. So I have a list of people to interview to see where that goes. And then I also have one candidate in backgrounds for a community service officer position. Of the three recruits, I said we're going to the academy, two are current community service officers, CSOs. So we're hiring from within. We're developing talent within the organization at the community service officer level and then develop, as they show talent and interest in advancing their careers, and they test, based upon how they test, they get the opportunity to go to the academy.
So does seventy-two get us to one point three eight? Is that where you're going?
Not exactly. Won't quite get us there. It's close. For us to be at one point, one point three, we would need to have, I have that for you. We would need to have actually seventy-eight FTEs.
Seventy-eight.
So we had, we would have to add six additional FTEs to the police department, commissioned FTEs. But that comes with a cost. That's a pretty significant cost factor because it's not just the officer's salary, it's also the equipment for the officer, it's vehicles for the officers, computers for the officers, it's body-on-cameras for the officers, it's computers for the officers. So as we move forward, looking at the next budget year and funding opportunities through the House bill 2015, we'll kind of see where we can go with that. I understand we're still moving into a police building next year. There's operating management fees and maintenance fees to go into that. We have the MOT program, the mobile outreach team, that needs to be funded out of some of those funds. So we're looking at different ways to fund that. I don't know if we'll get all six positions out of that new funding opportunity, but the city manager and I are having ongoing conversations about that. We should be able to give you a briefing about that in the future.
One other quick question, Chief. When they count these numbers, it's all commissioned officers, so does that include like yourself and the deputy chief because you're commissioned, or does only include those that are actually on the street?
They only generally, they don't generally count the chief in that number. We do in the seventy-two, but I won't kibbitz numbers. So, but generally, they don't count the command staff in that.
Chief's that good.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying that I'm very grateful for the funding we have and for the support we have.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's keep moving along here. Okay, let's give you an immigration enforcement update. So there've been a lot of questions about the role of the police department in immigration enforcement with all the interesting things that have been happening across the nation. I can tell you we have no role. And as part of the Keeping Washington's Working Act passed in 2019, it prohibits Washington law enforcement from engaging in or assisting in federal administrative immigration enforcement. So our policy and our train prohibit us from engaging in detentions based upon immigration status. We don't ask your status. We don't, that's not something that we have that purview to do, much like I don't enforce logging rights or anything like that. It's just not within my jurisdiction or purview. It's not something that I would look at. It's an administrative issue. However, if somebody comes in from an authorized law enforcement agency with a criminal investigation, we will assist with that criminal investigation, criminal meaning an actual underlying statute of crime, not an administrative crime. And it's been reviewed with, by judicial review generally. An example of that was the recent theft of JBLM. There've been a couple of recent cases that have had a lot of notoriety related to JBLM and some thefts and different things going on there, and we have assisted with those that had a local nexus. Any questions on that?
If I can just add a little bit right there as a, for the council, too, the other thing that we're looking to get information out to the public, one is the presentation tonight, but also creating a Know Your Rights webpage, which I think just went live today, as well as a one-sheet flyer that can be put out in places in the community as well. And I'll send those links out to the council after the council meeting.
And the only thing I'd add is that I've asked, people have asked, what do you know about anything coming up? I have gotten no information about current or planned enforcement activities by the federal government related to immigration. Once in a while, I'll get a notification about a criminal investigation, but I've had no information about anything immigration-related.
And one thing I forgot to add on that, all that information, it is currently put out there in five different languages into the community, just to make sure that everybody knows what the roles and responsibilities and the rights are related to this topic.
Well, you'll have some of those printed?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now we're gonna transition to looking ahead towards 2025, that we're halfway through already here, actually about the end of the fall, but we have a pretty good idea, we think, how things are gonna kind of look towards the end of the year, and I wanted to share that with you. So looking ahead for the rest of the year with a couple caveats. So please note, the following slides are projections only and estimations for specific crime categories that based upon current crime trends we're observing during the first six months of the year. This is not set in stone. I'm not Nostradamus, right? I'm just giving you basically what it looks like if we just basically double the numbers or what we see in the first part of the year, which is a pretty fair Kentucky winning way of looking at crime. Projections are based on a number of crimes, not the crime rate. Now, remember, everything I showed you prior was all crime rate-based. This is raw data. So difference right there. And the projections are provided for illustration purposes only. So just to kind of give you an idea where we think we're heading with crime. Okay, first crime category we're gonna look at is robberies, and that's the taking a property using force or fear or some type of weapon. With that, we've only observed nine of those so far this year in the first six months. If you double that, that's eighteen, and it's still a tremendous decrease that we've seen over the last five years. That would be over a twenty-one percent decrease over the five-year trailing average. And again, year-over-year, that'd be a decrease of about thirteen percent. So again, that's trending in the right direction. Assaults, there's something I'm a little more concerned about. Aggravated assaults, those are on the increase. Just doubling that, we'd go from forty-five to ninety, which would be an increase of about nine crimes over that of last year. As you can see, that's an increasing average over time. We're seeing more violence in the streets. We're seeing people more aggressive in the streets. That could be an indication of both greater use of narcotics and intoxicants, as well as people that have mental illness. So we're seeing some of those things. Simple assaults are kind of staying steady more or less from that. And again, those, a simple assault is basically an assault and battery. Aggravated assault means that it used either great bodily force, a weapon, or caused some type of great bodily injury, meaning that of a broken bone or teeth, loss of teeth, those kind of things. Weapons violations tend to be going down year-over-year after staying steady for several years. Again, we're seeing some statistical changes, but again, it's kind of a small number of data sets. You're gonna see some pretty wide swings percentage-wise there. You're still under twenty-five for most of those year categories. Narcotics violations, as you know, the state has changed drug laws a lot over time, just in the five, six years I've been here, they've changed quite a bit from being illegal to not illegal to not constitutional to let's bring it back. Yeah, so here we are. Right now, it's illegal. So now we're doing enforcement operations. There is a little bit of a snag, I have to say, with narcotics paraphernalia. There's a flaw in the state law with how it's written. And so we're gonna have to correct that flaw in order to make our local municipal code valid again. So we're in the process of working with our lobbyists and see what we can do to get that fixed. But right now, there's some problems with it. So we really can't make any more arrests based upon narcotics paraphernalia, but we'll still be doing them for drug-related arrests for the actual narcotics themselves.
How did 21, 22 get so low? Is that because of the, just because the drugs were legal for two years?
They were legal for two, for part of that time. Also, we weren't allowed to do enforcement unless we had probable, we couldn't contact people during 21 and 22 unless we had probable cause that a crime was occurring. So you had to actually see them consuming the narcotics right in front of you before you made contact with them to make an arrest for that. Or a lot of times, we came across drugs happenstance as part of another investigation. Like I arrested you, if I arrest somebody for shoplifting and they had drugs in their pockets, that's how you would make a narcotics arrest related to that. Again, that was part of our interesting time with legislature when they changed the rules for law enforcement for a while.
So if something like that was to happen, then it would be on the shoplifting slide and the drug slide?
Yeah, the greater crime would be on the slide.
Got it. Real quick.
We don't double stamp.
Could you actually go back, because it is something I've actually, I've talked about with a few people lately about the difference between the Lacey Municipal Code and the RCW regarding like drug use and the, but I didn't get a real good explanation on what exactly that means. What you were talking about with the difference in the LMC and the RCW, and almost sounded like the RCW was written somewhat intentionally to make it difficult. So I'm just wondering if we actually think that they will update that?
Oh, I would never, ever try to crawl into the mind of legislators. People make laws for all sorts of different reasons. They write laws for different reasons. I'd like to tell you that the RCW is written in plain English and plain language. It's not. It's open to interpretation. And a lot of times, they'll start the section off with legislative intent and then write the law, which doesn't seem to reflect the intent they just stated. But it happens all the time, right? When you have many people wordsmithing a document, sometimes the meaning gets lost along the way, either sometimes intentionally, sometimes unintentionally, that's just the way it is. So that's why we do cleanup language, and we do that in a variety of laws in a variety of areas, not just drug enforcement, but a lot of other types of laws, too. And so I think that's where we kind of land on that.
I still don't quite understand it, but at least what the actual hiccup is, but hopefully that is something that can be addressed in the future.
It's definitely something we're paying attention to. I did a lot of narcotics enforcement during my career. I see it as an important part of what we do. I've seen law enforcement, or saw narcotics ruin a lot of lives, so I take it very seriously. And I hate it when tools get taken away, and unfortunately, that's one of our tools, and we hope to get it back. Motor vehicle theft, here's a bright spot. Apparently, I was pointing to the right commission at the right time. So motor vehicle thefts have been going down, down, down ever since the height of COVID, when not a lot of traffic stops were happening, so people weren't being detected, then pursuits were taken away, then they couldn't be stopped. People saw it as a very low-risk crime, so a lot of people engaged in it. Also, you had the issue with, there was social media and how to steal the car easily, unfortunately, and there's people using that as well. So that software glitch and technique has been addressed, so you're starting to see them go down there. You're also, now that we can pursue, it's more of a high-risk crime, so people are not engaging in it as much. They're getting caught. Different camera systems are capturing them quickly, so you can identify stolen car rather quickly now in various jurisdictions. So we're seeing them go down, down, down. Now, the additional numbers you see written on the slide are the number of recoveries we have. So the little white number there you see is the number of recoveries we have. So we tend to recover the majority of stolen vehicles. And the red number is, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go to my slide so I can read it. And that's not gonna help me. It's even smaller than mine. And that's how many were recovered locally. So the white numbers recovered, we recover out of jurisdiction generally, a lot, and a few all. you all, shall we say, or can't sometimes, not to badmouth them, but that's sometimes where they tend to be headings. And a lot of times, we, the red number, like I said, is we recover them locally, or they're just using them to take, when locally, that would mean somewhere in Thurston County. Burglaries, another bright spot. So again, burglaries have been trending down for the last several years. We are looking at a very low rate of burglary currently, and that's both residential and the commercial. We've actually seen a greater reduction in residential burglaries. A lot of people staying home, working from home has had that added benefit of people that want to break into a place that's occupied, especially residential. So the burgs we do, the burglaries we too tend to see tend to be commercial in nature or store units. Larcenies, that's a catch-all category, it covers shoplifting, it covers stolen bicycles, all manners of theft are kind of fall into that larceny category. We are seeing some decreases, but again, that's that constant, that, that really tends to the bulk of our crimes. Destruction of property, vandalism, malicious mischief, that goes from everything from graffiti to people breaking stuff along the way. So we're seeing around, and that's about a pretty even number year to year, again, and that goes all the way from people scribbling something in the, in a public bathroom to large graffiti pieces to large destruction-type things. It kind of runs the gamut on what, what's going on. So we investigate all those. There, there you go. I got through it pretty quick, but there's additional information on our website with our BNI report for 2023 and 2024, for anyone who'd like to take a look, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead. I couldn't remember if we're doing here, but are we doing, has kind of like the expansion of Ring Camera like helped with some of the burglaries? And are we, do we, I know some municipalities do it kind of like access, you know, have access programs for that? Is that something we're doing here?
Yes, we partnered with Ring, and as you know, we, we added a digital forensic analyst, and part of what she does is also evaluate video evidence, video surveillance evidence from different partners, you know, there are a host of providers, including Ring.
Any other questions?
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Almada. And I, you know, he started off with bringing up the police department, but I also want to add a little bit to that as well. As I think the council knows and the community knows, we've had a longstanding, you know, high-quality service out of our police department for many, many years, and Chief Almada and Deputy Chief Hollis in the back of the room have continued that tradition. And also part of this, through that, over the years of transition, we've had some of our longer-tenured police officers and commanders retire out, and we have a lot of new, young members coming in, and they've done a great job of recruitment, you know, getting good quality candidates. And again, training from the command staff all the way down to the sergeants and, and training the, our new officers in, in that community policing model. Again, in addition to these stats that the chief just went through, they also do a lot of work in terms of connecting with the community through coffee with the cop, cops' kids and cards activity, national night out, going out to the community and meet individuals and developing those relationships so they're a known entity, and that goes a long ways in reduce, creating positive impacts out in the community versus the negative. So I just want to commend the chief, deputy chief, and the rest of the police department on their work and continuing that work and doing a great job for our, keeping our community safe.
Thanks. Now, we'll go on to council reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report. How about you, Deputy Mayor?
I do not have a report.
I'm going to hold my report for the next meeting because I don't have my notes with me.
No problem. Councilmember statement?
No report.
Councilmember Cox.
Had to unmute there. I had a hat that was being obnoxious. All right, just one report on the Regional Housing Council meeting that took place on August 27th. We approved an emergency fund request that went to Interfaith Works in the amount of And this was to repair damage from a fire that was set in one of the units there. So we, the vote was unanimous to recommend to county commissioners that this emergency fund request be approved. Part of the reason for this is that insurance for housing of this type is prohibitively expensive to begin with. And for a loss of $51,000, it could be crippling if rates, I mean, they could lose their insurance policy altogether, or rates could just be astronomical. And so the concern was that if they, you know, if they didn't pay cash for this, there would be a bigger headache down the road, and we agreed on that. We also got updated figures from the State Department of Commerce in Thurston County for the state funding that's going to the different shelters, including Maple Court. The final number that we landed on for Maple Court was 2.9 million, and then the rest was distributed among the other tiny house and permanent supportive housing places. We had a discussion on hearing from rotating members of a committee called the Lived Experience Housing Steering Committee. This group has been an advisory group, but hasn't been an active participant in regional housing council meetings. These people are subject matter experts, they're service providers, some of them are from other jurisdictions, but the staff is going to consult these, the committee members, and propose a list of topics for upcoming meetings, and then the subject matter experts who might best address these topics. We also reviewed the status of the five-year update of the county's homeless response plan. The Department of Commerce issued five statewide plan objectives, one of which is a new one this year. Next step in this is going to be public hearing that the county will conduct in October. And this plan has such a big impact on the way intake is done, and how people are sheltered, who gets what, that sort of thing. Then I requested that they present an annual update to our council at a work session, and so they are going to get back to us on that. But I just, I think it would be really good for them to hear from us and we to hear from them on this. A quick follow-up, we had a retreat in the summer, we adopted a vision statement that says everyone in Thurston County has stable shelter, that they feel is safe, and the services that they need to thrive. And so in September, we're going to be working on our mission statement, and October, we'll work on values, and November, we're going to be working on governance, which is the big one. So lots of, lots of work there. And then, just as a little side note, I announced at the meeting our sale of the Mullin Road property to the housing authority, and the county commission's communication staff is going to do a short write-up on it for the Regional Housing Council's September newsletter. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Vasquez?
No report yet. The TRPC meets on Friday, and it's a packed agenda, including an update on the search for the next executive director, so stay tuned.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunning?
No committees, but I did want to go over the housing roundtable with Lieutenant Governor that I attended, me and Vanessa attended last week. So the two main focuses of that were how to, how to make it easier to transform, kind of like what we've done with our downtown area, you know, office complexes and things like that, into potential housing options, or like we've kind of talked about with areas like the south, south center, or south sound, I'm blanking on the exact name, but like parking lots, for example, where there's just kind of wasted space, which is becoming more and more abundant in different areas. And I know we had kind of talked in our meeting last month about that, is, you know, what are they trying to do? Trying to like, how they kind of do parking, where they apply everything to everyone? That's not really what the meeting was about. It was more of a gathering of trying to figure out what the individual cities' needs were, and it honestly seemed like a lot of them aligned, and different cities had different needs, obviously some had a lot more, you know, industrial areas, or some had a lot more commercial areas. But the main goal of it was really to figure out how to make that easier on everyone. So the main kind of thing that kept getting brought up was the, the costs associated with like the, the energy codes. So some of the ideas that were tossed around was looking at projects more comprehensively, where if, let's say you have to do all this demolition, you know, that's going to be environmentally damaging versus upgrading to specific things, maybe it's actually more, more beneficial to, to be able to go forward with a project without that. And so it was really just more of an idea session. And one of the things that came out of that, that they've been working on, is a pilot program for each city to have different structure types. You know, one kind of a city ran, one nonprofit, one private sector, where they basically take a project, they fast-track it and streamline it, and then figure out, well, what is actually going to work, versus kind of the top-down approach, it's like, okay, here's the new rules. So this pilot program they're working on right now, that hopefully they can implement sometime next year, which would give us, for example, the city of Lacey, the ability to pick different projects that we could potentially try to push forward, that would then give us more ideas on how we solve some of our, some of our housing issues moving forward. And so it could be used more so as a proof of concept than a, just kind of a top-down ideas, here's what, here's what everyone has to do approach. And so that was really the, the, the gist of the entire conversation was, was kind of meeting cities where they're at and not just trying to pass down what, you know, what the state wants to do, and then trying to figure out, well, if we're going to help fund some of this stuff, or we're not, which obviously with the budget, you know, a lot of ideas were, how do we, how do we get more housing without having the ability to fund it? And so that's part of the conversation as well too. And, you know, I kind of, you know, put out there, maybe, maybe with this pilot program, you know, we find ways where maybe it's not us having to put in money, maybe, maybe there's a, a way to get these companies to do things that makes financial sense to them, but also makes beneficial sense to the municipalities. So it was really good, and hopefully we get more information about that. They recommended doing, doing these with the, with the same group, or at least same, same cities, maybe on a quarterly basis or something, but there will be some sort of information coming out probably later this year and early next year about what they plan on doing, so.
Great. Well, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. It is 7:23, and so without objection, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. As always, you keep it classy, Lacey.